I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our December regular meeting. I will read the Dodge City Community College mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. At this point in time, we'll open the microphone for anyone from the audience who'd like to speak to the board, give a brief initiative. If you do so, please state your name and your address. Hearing none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting on November 14th. The minutes have been distributed. Does anyone have any recommendations for changes?
I move approval, Mr. Chairman.
Moved for approval by Mrs. Hampton, seconded by Dr. Conant. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and so order. We'll now have completion of the agenda. Carla, would you please enlighten us?
Yes, you do have revised agendas at your seats along with an addition of Item E, consulting agreement McKenzie-Willfong. For the consent agenda, you have two items, two employment appointments, one for a security officer and one for residence life director.
Have you heard the recommendation? Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda? Moved by Mr. Harshberger.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dr. Pressley. Any further discussion on this subject? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and so order. We will now have reports to the Board of Trustees. Vanessa, you're up first, the Student Government Association. Vanessa Hernandez.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairperson and President Knowles. Tonight, we start off with Student Nursing Association, who has completed two fundraisers. The Circle of Hope fundraiser raised approximately $700 to donate to the local Circle of Hope cancer group, which will then be presented to area families battling cancer. Their T-shirt and sweater fundraiser raised approximately $450 for the Student Nursing Association to be used for scholarships for current nursing students for the spring semester. SNA also donated almost 500 non-perishable food items to Compass just before Thanksgiving break. They also had approximately 15 nursing students volunteer at the Armory Thanksgiving lunch, either by helping set up the night before or serve and clean up the day of Thanksgiving. The SNA students have been very active in service and volunteerism this semester. Student Government Association hosted their ugly sweater karaoke event last week where students sang to their favorite holiday songs and enjoyed hot chocolate with cookies. SGA has also been discussing new events for next semester, and SGA would also like to wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you.
It's good to see the Association busy.
Nice report.
And happy holidays to you. Before we go into the trustees' report, I do want to introduce trustee-elect Kathy Ramsar. Sitting back there, wave Kathy. We'll have trustee Malone.
I don't have anything.
Harshberger?
I don't have anything.
Anthony?
Yes, I do. I want to particularly congratulate the STEM pub. This little story was in the paper, that we have an outstanding group of STEM students. We heard that before when we know that we had two Hispanic young women who were going to attend the national conference. And my comments about that is, this is such a critical subject matter in the United States. We, a couple of years ago, I know, we're number 24 in the world for STEM ratings. That is embarrassing. It's unnecessary. We teach our masses to read and to get along in the world with the minimum, but we have not kept up with these things that are going to run the world. And I am so pleased that we have been recognized for this kind of an honor. I really want to congratulate the sponsors and wish them well and hope they will continue with that kind of a situation that is credible in our college. We're contributing to that need in the United States. Another thing I want to say is thank you to whoever designed the pretty card. I just really like it. I think it was a work of art. It looks classy, so thank you. And I particularly want Andrea to know that because she knows it at first. I just didn't understand that new logo, so thank you for that. Another thing that we should be particularly proud of is that our choir is going to Ireland by invitation, and that's a particularly special honor, and we certainly should be appreciative of those young people who are making the fine arts their priority at this time. And finally, I was so pleased to get the message that the city commission people had congratulated some of our staff and administrators on being so congenial and cooperative and helping build. And my comment is that I hope that we might finally have reached a stage where we can now build instead of tear down. It's time to start working together. And if you remember, I've said this before, I borrowed a slogan from KU, "To go far above, we must go together." And I hope we can remember that and make it work. Okay.
Thank you for your report. Dr. Pressley?
Dr. Pressley, I have a report. Wish everybody happy holidays.
Dr. Conant?
I have no report.
And I really have no report either tonight. We will now move to Vice President Veda Herman. She's going to report on state aid distribution.
I got a request from trustee Malone to talk about state aid, and I sent out in your packets the information that you'll find that is state aid received for FTE. Also attached to Malone is explaining the funding because we're on pure technical funding now. We no longer, they no longer fund us by FTE. FTE is not even calculated in the formula. It's funded by hours and what you, what course you're taking. That's what the sure funding is. The average course that you take on the vocational side has a different amount that they reimburse you. And if you'll read on page 60 of the stuff that you found in the packet, it says, 2011, Senate Bill 143 created a new postsecretary technical educational education formula, which becomes effective July 1, 2011. The part of the formula is the K-Bord cost model that calculates costs at a course level and recognize the cost differential in delivering technical education courses. With that being said, then I got a response back from trustee Malone that wanted to know if all colleges, number one, if all colleges receive the same. Well, that's not the way. It depends on exactly what the students taking, how many students you have in nursing, how many students you have vocational. The education program is academic, I'm sorry. Your academics are just based on a grant issue. But I did go back and did some research to try to get it calculated to the information you're asking for. So what they do is we now start in July, Judith Maxwell does this for us, forming a database. And by September, we lock in all of our information that's fed into the database. We don't send any reports like we used to. Then K-Bord takes that information out of the database and runs it through their formulas. So if we look at the pages that I left after, let's just go to these here, I think we can see how the, get an idea of how the funding formula works. I took in-state Kansas academic hours and divided them by 30. That gives you your 688, and we're talking about 2016, 2017. That's 688 FTEs. The state aid I actually received from K-Bord was 1,451,580, which calculates out to our academic hours are running about 2,000 per FTE. But if you look on the vocational side, doing the same thing, you're getting funded about 4,000, double on your vocational side. And that's why it's very, very important that we get our workforce development hours up because they've been gradually going down. That's where the funding is going to be. Now, you had asked a question on 16, why what they said they were going to disperse the 2,589, 081 in 2016, why it didn't match up to K-Bord. That's where we got our workforce income. And I was actually reporting what we received, not what they projected. So I don't know if I, do you have other questions you want to?
No, this answers it quite thoroughly. They don't figure in the out-of-state or non-residence in Kansas at all, right?
No, no, no. And that's why I separated those out for you, so you could see how many FTE, even though we don't get funded, that we have for out-of-state.
Like, how many of the 336 FTE are related to the helicopter program on the out-of-state?
I have no idea. I would have no idea. Is that, I have no chance. Could we possibly pull that out of there? Okay. 16, 17.
Thank you.
Is there any other question?
On the vocational, all the community college for in-state vocational get the same, don't they?
Get the same.
Amount per FTE.
But per, go to the tier funding, yes, they do. It's like welding. Every college gets the same amount of money for FTE and welding.
Well, the whole, you know, the whole state's going backwards because before the lawsuit, we got two for one.
Yes, yes.
But Johnson County and Coffeyville and Hutchinson were getting about four or five to one.
Yeah.
But now, now they're getting the same.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's the important part here. The lawsuit did take care of that problem. Okay.
And it's important to note that you're the one that caught that.
What?
Yes.
I just wanted to know all the complaining about it, yeah.
The, when you say the tier funding, you mean welding is different than an English class?
Oh, absolutely. It's based on cost of the class.
Well, thank you, Veda, for pulling that report out. But now move to action items. The first is a security camera system for Coleman Webb. Vice President Timon?
Okay, thank you. Good evening. As you recall, Coleman Webb is the last residence hall that we have on campus that has not been fully renovated. And so what we're trying to do with this request is upgrade the security cameras in that hall so that they are compatible with and of the same quality of the other, the rest of the residence halls. We sent this out for a bid. It was a sealed bid, and we sent to 12 vendors. We received two bids. One was late, and only one was on time. And that was self-engineering a cable system. And the others that we sent to declined to bid, probably most likely because this is considered a smaller project by the Eastern Wichita, Kansas City companies, where if it was a whole new hall, it would be a larger amount they would tend to bid on it. But we did have our local company bid, and that's Southwest Engineering and Cable. And they came in, this is a total cost of $18,649.24. That includes 15 of the cameras, the network switch, also the camera license for each of those, and then the fiber and the installation, because this will be digital. So that was what we came up with. We looked at this project compared to the camera costs per camera and averaged it out with our Sheldon renovation and also Becker, and it was right in line. So I don't think it's a, I do not think it's out of line with what our normal costs are. So we're asking for your approval tonight. And it is what I consider to be a life safety issue, and so we would like to get these installed over Christmas break.
You have a question?
Since this is our oldest dorm, and we don't know for sure what might be in the future for it, this will be salvageable if we do something else?
Yes, let's say that we decided to renovate that hall. If we did a cost analysis, then these would be new enough that we would recover them and reuse them. If we, for some reason, did a cost analysis, decided to demolish the hall at some point in the future, as long as it was within, I would say, five, six, seven years, we could recover the cameras, they would still be in good use.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Timon?
I'll move to him to approve.
Mr. Harshberger approves the recommendation, seconded by trustee Malone. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and so order. Next item, B, the Dublin Coral Festival, Dean Wardy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask for the board's support of the college choir's travel to Ireland in the summer. Trustee Hampton has mentioned this already. This is a great opportunity for students on our campus or participating in choir. I understand we currently have about 18 students who are very interested and committed to participating on this trip. I'd like to mention that under Professor Kuplick's direction, this group would be attending this festival. They've been specifically invited by this company, which sponsors festivals of music, oral performances, all around the world. The students are particularly excited, for some reason, about going to Dublin. That's Carrie's phrase, you know, means like, didn't think they'd be too excited about Ireland, but they are very much so. They'll have an opportunity to see sights in Dublin as well as to perform in the 900-year-old cathedral, Christ Church, there in Dublin, along with other choirs from around the world. I wanted to mention that last year, Carrie had 13 or 14 students in choir, but this year is 21. And so that's like a 30% increase. And we think that offering the opportunity for students to travel and perform can only help those numbers grow. You have in your packet, I believe, two versions of the letter of agreement from this company, Music Celebrations Incorporated, which has been doing this kind of thing since 1993. And Council Curbs had recommended some changes to the original letter of agreement, and so the most current letter of agreement is dated November 28. And I'll defer to Council Curbs. I believe this concern has been met.
That's true.
Is maybe revised on the letter of agreement. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Jay?
Do students have to raise their own funds?
We're providing a deposit on the amount through the fee funds, which understand Professor Kuplick's previous oral groups have raised through fundraising and contributions at concerts. So the students will be responsible for contributing individually for their tuition, if you will, and will also offset that with the fundraising.
Any more discussions? You have a staff recommendation before you. Do I have a motion for approval? Move approval. Moved by Dr. Conant. Seconded by, Malone got it first. Or seconded, whatever. You all right, Carla?
I'm fine, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye and so order.
Thank you.
Item C, Memorandum of Understanding, Dean Ossmos.
Yes, sir. Chairman Reeves, Dr. Knowles, board, good evening. The MOU before you this evening is with Kansas Area One Local Workforce Investment Board. That's a, it's a mouthful. It is for the purpose of creating increased collaboration amongst the workforce entities. Now, Dodge City Community College, in some form or fashion, has always had a partnership or a relationship with our local L-Web. More times than not, that's actually been through our Adult Learning Center services. What this new contract will do will allow us to increase our collaboration with our local workforce investment board between them and our Perkins-approved programs. So through this new MOU, it will increase our ability to do some joint marketing, some joint promotion, more or less just to bring more awareness to what we're doing here at Dodge City Community College and the opportunities that we have through our workforce programs. So I would ask that you approve of the MOU. Any questions?
Okay, you have the staff recommendation, do I have a motion?
Also move.
Moved by Harshberger. Seconded by Pressley. Any further discussion? Call a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Department of Allied Health, paraprofessional student, Professor Ewing? Amy, I'm sorry. I keep doing that. I apologize.
You guys probably can't hear me. All right. Board of Trustees and Dr. Knowles, you, I believe, have the Student Paraprofessional Handbook maybe in your packet, and so for your review. And we are here to seek approval of that handbook. It has been in the works for quite a while, and we're pretty excited. Glenn is laughing.
Should be.
Yeah, we kind of had a little communication snafu there, but we finally got it lined out, didn't we, Mr. Curbs? But anyway, it has been in the works for quite a while, and we're very excited about the prospect of having it ready for our spring semester. Lois Seefah, my cohort back here, is with me. And we find that we pass out a lot of individual papers, you know, we kind of kill it for us, so to speak, when we're trying to get kids enrolled and the first few days of school. And so we feel that this handbook will be an accessible item for the students to refer to, and it's also going to give them, give others guidance in the enrollment process because we have had, for, just to give you a little bit of background on this, our, the nursing courses must have a certified nurse aide, they must be a certified nurse aide before they can enroll in the nursing program. And so we, several years ago, probably about, I'm just guessing, eight or nine years ago, we discovered that we were having several students that were having trouble getting past that certified test. And so we went back and looked at that and reviewed kind of test scores, looked at our students, and decided that maybe the reading level was the culprit. And so we decided, because the certified medication aide course guidelines from the state are that they must be able to read at an eighth-grade reading level. We talked to several other colleges around, and some of them did also require a reading level for their CNAs. It's not required by the state, but some of them did require that. So we looked at that and decided we're going to go ahead and put that policy in place, and Glenn helped us with that at that time. And so we decided on the eighth-grade reading level, since the, for the CMA, it's required anyway at an eighth-grade reading level. So the, when, and it's worked really well. I mean, when, as we looked back on that and we saw that those certifications, they were passing their state tests, and so we felt like it was just a real win-win for us. The one downfall of it was that for some of our students, who, maybe they had gone on, gotten a bachelor's in something else, or maybe they were taking courses at a college in some other program and had decided they wanted to become nurses, they, our policy was that they had to take the Nelson-Denny reading test and read an eighth-grade reading level before they could enter the program. That being said, when you've got a kid in Manhattan that wants to enroll in the program, and they've got to go find somebody who'll administer a Nelson-Denny reading test for them, sometimes that was difficult. So we looked at the idea of comparing what most of those kids had taken SATs, they'd taken ACTs, compass tests, acuplacer tests. And so in your handbook on page six, it does give that comparison for that eighth-grade reading level. And so that will streamline this a bit and will take that requirement, you know, out for them having to take that. If, now, those that have never taken a test would still take the eighth-grade reading, the Nelson-Denny, for the eighth-grade reading level. But we felt like that would be a real bonus to get that in there. We also, as you can probably see, Mr. Curbs attached his approval letter for this handbook, and he had about four points on there that he just wanted to confer with us about and kind of see what our thoughts were. We did concur with Glenn on those first three points. The fourth one that had to do with academic honesty policies that were on page seven of the handbook. We, I talked to Michelle Haley, our director, about that, and we feel like with some of the things that had gone on in the nursing department, that utilizing both of those policies was still a good idea for us as well as them. And so we decided, if it's okay with you, I noticed Glenn said in his notes there that there may be a good reason for doing that. And so Mrs. Haley and I feel like we would still like to leave that that way, if possible. And so our policy does mimic the nursing, so for congruency, we felt like that might be good. So, does anybody have any questions?
Reaching hard work.
Thank you.
It's not easy.
No, it's not. And, you know, we, I was going to say, when we were talking about students, I kind of just, without going back and looking through, we probably have somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 students a semester, and those are five and six credit hour courses, and that's only the CNAs and CMAs. And we also have, Lois also teaches the refresher course for those who maybe haven't kept their CNA license current, and so that doesn't include those. And I also have CEUs that my medication students must take every two years, and that didn't include those. But that's fall, that's spring, fall, and also summer courses, around 50 students in the five. But that's, that's fall, that's spring, fall, and also summer courses, around fifty students in the five- and six-credit-hour range. So I just thought I'd throw that in there for you guys. But anyway, I just, if you would be willing to approve that, we would be really thankful, thank you.
Glenn, you're good with the recommendations?
I am, yes.
Heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
I make the motion.
Moved by Harshberger, seconded by Hampton. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and so ordered. Item E is a consultant agreement by Trustee Timon.
Okay, thank you. We do have the last item on the board action items. You will recall last year, the college was notified by the Office of Civil Rights in Kansas City, U.S. Department of Education, that they had received an anonymous complaint related to gender equity in our athletics program, and also with our housing assignment and placement based on gender. And so they went through and looked at that. We entered into, after quite a bit of discussion with them, we entered into a voluntary resolution agreement with them. And in the resolution agreement, I wanted to emphasize that they have quite a few requirements for us over the next few years, and there are monitoring agreements that we will comply with fully. We have had a couple of major changes since then. We've had the resignation of our athletic director and our financial aid director. So we have two new persons that are added to our committee that are working together now to comply. You may recall the name Mackenzie Welfong. We brought her out several years ago to do a lot of our Title IX training for our employees and our staff and our administration. And she was really excellent, we had worked with her before. And then as we, we also called her in for an external complaint, an investigation, she did an outstanding job on that. Ms. Welfong is currently the legal counsel at the University of Tulsa. However, she has also been a legal counsel for the Oklahoma Board of Regents and other places. But prior to that, she spent ten years as an enforcement attorney in the Office of Civil Rights. So she's very familiar with these types of agreements on both sides of the table, and comes highly recommended. She'll be able to assist us with a number of services, from consulting and analysis of data to make sure we're working through the formulas correctly. It's somewhat cumbersome, we have to do a lot of hand counts on our data, because we're not able to pull them from our student information system, per se. So she will be able to follow through our calculations, make sure that they're completely accurate. And I think Glenn Curbs has worked on the agreement, did you want to make any comments on it?
No, I think, as you said, we've worked with Ms. Welfong over the years with OCR issues. She's very well-versed and very easy to work with. She's always been someone that, if we had an issue, we could go to her, and she would not only help us work through it, but she also has the respect for the people in the Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. And so I think hiring her to work as a consultant is just good efficiency on our part, because she's been there, done that, and knows the way things need to be done to satisfy OCR.
So you can see the compensation is listed there and the financial considerations. I think those are very reasonable compared to others that we're aware of. And so we're just asking for your approval, more questions if you have any.
Any further questions from this side?
I think it's a good move, and I approve. I approve the approval.
You have the staff recommendation, do we have a motion?
I just.
Hampton, seconded by Harshberger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And we move to new business, the next two items, you want to handle those together, or do you want to do them single?
However you want to proceed, Mr. Chairman, I can just address them, because they are interrelated, they both grow out of.
They are interrelated, that's why you asked the question.
Right, right.
Let's deal with both of them together.
First of all, you have before you for first reading this evening, Board Policy 219. Board Policy 219 addresses executive sessions that would be held by the board. This grows out of two things. Number one, we had the complaint investigation last, late 2016 into 2017. And also, we had a change in the law, July first of 2017, in terms of what is statutorily required for executive sessions. So both Policy 219, and then, both 219 and the procedure changes make our policies compliant, both with the statute and the requirements of the Attorney General's Office. Going on to the second item is the code of procedure for the board. This is the board's procedure for meetings and how we handle motions and actions by the board, when our meetings are, et cetera. And Section 24 addresses executive sessions. Well, because of the statutory change of July first of this year, it is necessary to change that provision to make it compliant with what the law now requires. So these are both on for first reading this evening, and they'll be brought to you in January for final action. Any questions?
I just have a comment, Mr. Chairman, if I may. I was unable to be at the last board meeting, but I read with great interest the report from the Kansas Attorney General Office regarding this complaint, which I initially thought was invalid in the first place. And my reading of that pretty much corresponds with the result that I thought would happen. But it looks like that after spending $6,000 of taxpayer money with our just local legal fees, and appreciate Mr. Curbs' hard work on this, whatever else, the taxpayers' portion of the Kansas Attorney General Office and staff time, we have, the result is, we are now able to provide executive sessions with the proper written format. I think that's interesting, and that's the end result of that. Thank you.
All right, now move to the consent agenda, do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Conant, seconded by Presley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are now ready to deal with executive sessions. Executive session A, do you want to introduce that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss negotiations with the Professional Relations Committee of the Dot City Community College Faculty Association for the 2017-2018 school year contract pursuant to the employer-employee negotiations exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B3. The open meeting to resume in this location at 6:55 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, the college attorney, Vice President John, Vice President Herman, Dean Homorda, and Dean Osmond should be included in the executive session.
You heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
Also move.
Moved by Harshberger, seconded by Presley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we will excuse you for executive session. Okay, we're back in open session, there is no action following that executive session. We have a recommendation for a second executive session, Mr. Curbs, would you introduce, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss Dr. Adam John's employment contract pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:20 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, and Vice President John should be included in the executive session.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Conant, seconded by Presley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're back in executive session. We're back in open session, and there is action required following the previous executive session. I'll ask our council to introduce the action.
Mr. Chairman, before you is an employment contract between the board and Dr. Adam John. It's for the position of provost, where Dr. John would serve as the chief executive officer for all Dot City Community College campus locations outside the state of Kansas. The contract is for a term of three years, and an annual salary of $140,000, and it would begin in January 2018. The contract also provides for moving expenses not to exceed $10,000. The board would provide Dr. John with temporary housing in Arizona for a period of six months, at a stipend of $1,200 per month. And the contract would also provide for a vehicle allowance of $600 per month. All the above would be the exclusive salary provisions for Dr. John. Dr. John would also be entitled to other kinds of benefits that are available to other employees, they're all employees here at Dot City Community College.
You heard the recommendation? Any, do I have a motion? Moved by Hampton.
Seconded.
Seconded by Conant. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side? Motion passed. An unanimous vote.
Good luck.
All right. We have a recommendation for a third executive session, but that third executive session will be after a five-minute break, Mr. Counsel. Do you want to read the motion?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, how long?
Five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session beginning at 8:30, or, excuse me, 7:30 PM to discuss Dr. Harold Noldy's employment contract pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 754319B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 7:45 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, and the president should be included in the executive session.
Heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Harshberger, seconded by Conant, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're on a five-minute break. We're back in open session. I'd like to ask our council to introduce the action item that would be required.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve a third addendum to the employment contract. Dr. Harold Noldy is president of Dot City Community College. The third addendum makes three changes, amendments to his current contract. One, it extends the date of the contract, the termination date of the contract from June 30, 2019, to June 30, 2020. Secondly, it increases Dr. Noldy's monthly car allowance from $500 to $600 per month. And thirdly, it provides that Dr. Noldy should be entitled to an annual physical examination, and whatever is not covered by insurance or subject to deductible will be paid by the board. All other terms and provisions of his current contract remain the same and unchanged.
You heard the recommendation, do we have a motion? Moved by Harshberger, seconded by Presley. Any further discussion? Called a question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay?
Nay, and I want to explain that, it is not a vote against extending Dr. Noldy's contract. I think the timing is bad, I think this should be brought up with the new board in January. If it were, I would vote for it, and I'm confident that all the new trustees would also vote for it. One thing that still bothers me is that the contract we have with Dr. Noldy as a board requires that we evaluate him. And I think it's completely unfair that we have failed to do that to him, and it's unfair to him. And I hope that we cure that problem. But like I say, I don't like voting against it, it's just a timing matter. If this were brought up in January, I'd vote extend the contract.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Mr. Curbs, would you introduce the final executive session?
I will. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss a pending employee due process proceeding and related matters pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:00 PM. In addition to the trustees, the college attorney, the president, Vice President John, and Dean Homorda should be included in the executive session.
Heard the recommendation. Moved by Harshberger, seconded by Presley, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we're in executive session.
It is.
We're back in open session. I'll ask Mr. Curbs to introduce a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board accept the resignation of Jeremy Scott Thompson, effective at the end of the 2017-2018 school year. That resignation would be subject to the following, Mr. Thompson will be paid his salary through December 15, 2017. Mr. Thompson's suspension will continue until the date of resignation. After December 15, 2017, Mr. Thompson's suspension will be without pay. And thirdly, the college will keep Mr. Thompson on the college health insurance plan through May 2018. The monthly premium costs will be apportioned between Mr. Thompson and the college, as provided for in the negotiating agreement.
You heard the recommendation, do we have a motion?
Moved by Mr. Harshberger. Sir.
Seconded by Trustee Malone. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no further items in the agenda, so I entertain the motion for adjournment. Moved by Harshberger, seconded by Malone. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and so ordered, we are adjourned. Thank you.